Joe?
Yeah.
Okay. You're welcome.
I'm Joe Allen. I don't know if we've met in the lobby.
Joe Allen.
Yes.
Okay. Anthony.
Nice meeting you.
Anthony is right there. Okay, welcome all to the Land Weekend endorsement interview. We don't run this as a debate necessarily. We don't guarantee everyone equal time. This is just our opportunity to ask you guys questions and figure out who you want to endorse. So we want to start this off by giving each of you a few minutes to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running. So Joe, we started you down on that end.
Joe Allen, running for city council, district one. I think we all know that. I am a woodworker by trade. I've been doing that for 10, 12 years. Before that, I worked in art museums as an art installer and destruction kind of guy. Also painted houses. I have a manufacturing background. Recently, the company that I worked for kind of pivoted and took me from working in woodworking to now assembling the Safe Rest Villages. So I assemble them on site and then I've also been delivering them personally, driving the truck, putting them on site and then running maintenance, going out and working in the field.
Real quick, do you work for the company that manufactures the pods?
Yes.
What's the company called?
I don't know in this capacity if I want to... I don't know if they would want me to say it.
I think I've known it before. I think I've written about it before. It's just...
I don't think it's a big deal in saying it's lit.
I don't think so.
It's called Lit Workshop and it's actually just down the street here.
Okay.
It's in the northwest industrial area. Yeah, so you know, they put me in the field working with the Safe Rest Villages, seeing the conductions, the operations there. And then it kind of inspired me with the election coming up and it being such a big change of an election. It kind of inspired me to get involved. And then just another part of my background, this summer, the reason I was a very late joiner to the race and one of the reasons for that was I had a pretty major surgery this summer and I had to wait for that to pass, see how my recovery would go. Now that I'm recovering and recovering well from it, I have the time to run. So all these elements kind of came together.
Why are you running?
Because I live in district one and yeah, every time I leave my house, I see issues that I want to apply myself to and it's like we have to get... We have to get change occurring faster. I don't see any representation on our side of town and it's just a constant frustration. And it's like, like I said, the timing came together where it's like I can... Here's a possibility to apply myself to do it.
What sort of civic involvement do you have? Like have you sat on boards or advisory committees, anything like that?
I have completely no politics. No political background whatsoever.
Well, your question was different. I mean, have you ever joined the school board or any civic engagement? You know, big cookies for... To raise money for your school district? We're not talking about politics as much as just community engagement. Served any boards?
I've never served any boards. I've never had any formal capacity of holding any chair. I've never really sought any kind of leadership roles. I've been president in every community I've lived within. And it's like, as a musician, performer, I used to do comedy. So it was like, there was a lot of outreach and a lot of community and a lot of...
Where'd you grow up?
I grew up in Southern California.
Great. All right, thank you.
David?
Yeah, David Lynn. I'm running for city council because a lot of our families are struggling and scared out in East Portland. We don't get the representation, which means we don't get the resources out in East Portland. And too many of the families that I go and talk to as in my involvement in the school board and the neighborhood association is that people are afraid to go to the parks. People are afraid to go to the schools.
Can you just give us a minute bio, please?
Oh, I'll try to keep it to a minute. Grew up here in Portland. I grew up along 82nd Avenue. I was actually born in a little apartment just off 82nd Avenue. Went to Vestal Elementary, Binsmead, Madison High School. Then went to PSU and got degrees specializing in Portland history and Portland politics. And then right after leaving school, I jumped right into serving in the neighborhood association. Our first project was trying to get some county surplus property turned over to a voluntary library in Monavilla. And then that just led me into every position in the neighborhood. I was Parks Chair, Outreach Chair. I would write the blurbs for Southeast Examiner, go door to door with the newsletters and stuff. And especially after 2008, you know, and the housing crash, we saw so much more contentiousness in the community. We saw incidents along the 205 bike path. We heard rising vigilanteism, a lot of things that were concerning. And I had struggled to convey the sense of urgency to my elected officials at the time. I would go to town halls and stuff like that.
Can you talk about your employment history?
Yes, I have worked for the state of Oregon for over 15 years. I work in regulation. I work for the Speech, Language, Pathology and Audiology Board. I worked with the...
All right, so slow down. So you're currently employed by the state of Oregon?
Yes.
And you work for the Speech?
Speech, Language, Pathology and Audiology Licensing Board.
And this is a board that licenses speech pathologists?
Correct, yes.
Gotcha.
We also do like legislative review every legislative session. It's my job to kind of look at bills and do the fiscal impact statements and submit those back to legislative fiscal office. And a lot of budget work because it's a very small agency. So it's basically myself and an executive director and investigator.
And would you leave this job if you got elected to city council?
Absolutely, yeah. I think I absolutely expect this to be a full-time job representing constituents and doing constituent services and being out in the community. I was a union steward for SEIU when I was working for the state or when I was in a different position for the state. I volunteered and ran for the Centennial School Board. And through that, I serve on OSBA, the School Board Association Legislative Policy Committee. I basically get my hands in any time that there's an opening and something that the community needs a voice for, I've stepped up into that position.
Thank you.
And I'm currently the president of the Centennial Community Association.
Thanks.
Doug Loewyman. I moved out here when I was four years old. My family moved from Milwaukee, Wisconsin, originally from Chicago. I grew up here and did all the schools. I went to Our Lady of Sorrows on 52nd and Woodstock, if you know that school. It's still there, but it's not a parochial school anymore. And then I went on Franklin High School, on to Mount Hood Community College, where I ran for office for the Vice President of Finance, where I won that. And I wrote the student fee budget, which I really enjoyed doing. It was actually the only position that mattered in that whole Mount Hood Community College student government. And then I went on to Portland State, obtained my bachelor's degree in political science and social science. And then while at Portland State, landed a job as a meter reader with the Portland Water Bureau. Absolutely loved it. And I've been with the Water Bureau for 26 years. In my time with the Water Bureau, I went from meter reader to meter reader two. When the new Cuyana billing system came upon us, if you're aware of that, we had an open vision, which went... Which completely failed, the billing system. And so I was part of the program to replace the one that failed. And for two and a half years, I worked downtown as a business systems analyst on that project, representing the field services and what we needed from that software. And so then I went back on. Now I went back to working in the field and currently I'm an inspector with the Water Bureau and out in the field all day, every day. And I've been with the city for 26 years.
And you're running?
I am running because I absolutely love this city. I've grown up in the city. The city's done a lot for me. I grew up over in the Woodstock area where you could walk to Woodstock Park and play every weekday, every weekend. There was no issues with other kids, the old thing. The city is really, I don't like where it's gone. It's not the city I grew up with. And so I think it's time to... I just, with this new form of government, I'm near the end of my career with the Water Bureau. And so I figured, you know what? I'm going to try to do something here and make a difference instead of all the same stuff that keeps going on. We're going on the way of San Francisco and Seattle where not. Oregon has always been different and that's what's really cool about Oregon. So I'm running to really just kind of be a normal voice among a bunch of, I believe, out of touch elites in city hall.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
Hi, I'm Noah Ernst. My history is I've grown up all over Western and Oregon and Western Washington. We moved around a great deal. My dad was in the plywood industry. He did what all great herms do. You get in at the top and ride it all the way to the bottom. So he... Mills would close and we would move. And so there was one period I went to four different schools in two years. And anyway, we ended up in Snohomish, Washington. I went to Central Washington University. I got degrees in fine art and philosophy, so I wasn't actually qualified to do anything. But I could talk a lot. And from there, my dad and I started a business in the wood products industry. We did custom cutting of wood for a company in California that made fruit boxes out of it, which was kind of fun. We moved it to Eugene because it was closer to our customers and because it was cheaper. And about another year in, I realized that, oh wow, I love my dad very much. I could not be in business with him. And I decided to go to law school, which is of course a trade school for liberal arts majors, which I was in spades. Practiced law for... Graduated, passed the bar in 2000, practiced law actively until 2009.
What law did you practice?
I practiced civil litigation. And so I started at a small firm in Eugene. We represented a lot of really mom and pop people in Southern Oregon. I did some fighting overeasements through... On dirt roads through woods and that kind of... That kind of very simple, basic stuff. I moved to Portland because I decided it was the city I wanted to be in. And got a job here. I did discovery document analysis on huge patent litigation cases. And then the last firm I worked at, we predominantly represented contractors and developers and I was in their construction defect litigation.
I'm sorry, can you name the law firms in Portland?
I can't. Clark was Sparkman and the other firm was Jordan Schrader, which I now believe is Jordan Ramus.
Right.
And I got let go in 2009 because of course 2008 happened. And if your contractors aren't building anything or your developers, there's no contract work on the front end, but then there's no litigation work on the back end. And I... That was what the American Bar Association called the worst legal job market since the Great Depression. So I was unemployed for a year. A friend of mine worked at Radio Cab Company and they said, "You want to drive a cab while you're looking for a real job?" And driving is absolutely a real job. I drove nights at Radio Cab for three years and a superintendent position opened up. So I applied for that. And now I've since for the last 10, 11 years, I've been a superintendent. And since I've maintained my bar license, I'm also an in-house counsel for them. I help them with, you know, external attorneys.
You're in-house counsel for?
Radio Cab Company.
Right. And you said you're a superintendent?
Yes.
For?
Radio Cab Company.
What does that mean?
Superintendent is the person who... They're sort of the people who put out fires, but also manage the drivers to the extent that managing independent contractors...
Gotcha.
Is the thing. It's very much like herding cats, but it's also helping people go through the process of permitting, both themselves and their vehicles. We have a lot of contracts with different school districts, different accounts around the city. Some of those have compliance, things that the drivers have to do. So I help them get through, jump over those hurdles. And then obviously a cab company is going to have auto accidents. So I work with our outside counsel, who's our auto accident counsel. We have a union at Radio Cab, so I do... I'm part of the union negotiation team from the management side. And just general everyday contract review, all that kind of stuff. But it's probably 75, 25% in terms of just supervisory for the cab.
But you're currently a dues-paying member of the Oregon State Bar?
I am currently a dues... Yes.
Great. So why are you running?
I'm running because I'm just frustrated. I'm frustrated with the direction the city is going. I'm frustrated with what I perceive as a lack of ability of our city to get things done. I'm as frustrated or appalled frankly at the amount of money that we're spending, especially on areas like homelessness and housing where we're not... We're not seeming to achieve anything. I know that... So and then I built up to running, is the way I would phrase it. As Uber and Lyft came into Portland in, I think, 2018. And I was part of what we called the Transportation Fairness Alliance. I was the spokesman. It was part of an organization of private for hire companies coming together to say, "Hey, we have to have fair, balanced, equal regulations for Uber and Lyft and the cab companies." So there's an equal playing field. And I saw what happens when an entire industry is completely ignored by the people in city hall. We were actively excluded. The committee that was set up to determine how to let Uber and Lyft in excluded everybody from private for hire and everybody from the taxi industry. And Uber and Lyft ultimately got whatever they wanted. And I have spent the last eight years working with P-Bot staff, working with commissioner's staffs, working with commissioners, drafting code provisions to try to get those... Some restoration of equality or fairness back in the code and have seen nothing happen. We literally... Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you give us the names of the city commissioners and/or staff you have worked most closely with?
It's been eight years. Chloe Daley and Marshall Brunkel, we talked to all the time when she was in charge. Got nothing done. I've talked to... And then we would go around, you know, so I talked to Fish. I talked to... Now I can't remember the name, English accent, Parks Department. Amanda Fritz, we talked to her several times. We talked...
That's funny. You're giving us enough names that we can check and see what they say about what we did.
Oh, you don't want to... They might not always say nice things because I'm very passionate about making, you know, our industry, the unfairness of what happened and making change. But in eight years, even when P-Bot agreed with our code change and said, "We absolutely should do this," and even when the Private for Hire Advisory Committee approved the code change, we haven't got anything in front of city council in eight years. And that's just impossible. That's not a way a city should be run.
Why do you think that is?
It's because...
Who benefits from not...
It's not about benefiting in a lot of cases. It's about Chloe Daley not caring about private fire transportation. She cared about homelessness. She cared about something else. And when you had commissioners in charge of bureaus, they could say, "We don't care about that. We care about this. This bureau's going to sit here." And then Joanne Hardesty got put in charge of P-Bot and she literally said to the director of P-Bot, "Don't call me. I will call you if I need anything." And so nothing got done at all for four years.
All right, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we ask that you each identify the most important thing you would do if you were elected at city hall and tell us how you'd do it?
The most important, narrow me down, is a task. Because I see it, there's so many... It's all...
Yeah, we're asking in private, Ace.
I see that. I would say... Defining the role going forward as it is a new position. Understanding that it's a...
So your most important role, your campaign platform is you are going to define the role of what it is to be a city commissioner?
If you're asking what my campaign priorities are, I would say public safety is the number one issue that I'm running on.
Okay, so what's the number one thing you do for public safety?
I would increase support and funding, understanding, now reach for public street response and make that more of a hardwired facet of the police...
Public response is not getting enough funding right now in your mind?
I don't think it's getting enough funding and support. I don't think it's a robust enough system. I think it's underfunded and it's a fantastic idea.
Thanks. David?
And could I add one detail to my bio?
Sure.
Before, while working full-time, I went back and got a master's degree in local government.
Okay.
PSU. So related to the...
Sure.
To the position. Homelessness is the number one issue when we talk to people. And we have been working not only with the new proposed TIF districts, but we've been advocating for a lot of the vacant lots that dot up and down Burnside Stark Division. A lot of those zombie houses, the... A lot of abandoned commercial buildings. We really want to take the plan that the council and the Monmouth County are formulating with their targets of about 3,000 shelter beds. And we want to not only make that happen, but go beyond that so that we can start getting...
So your priority would be to aggressively expand the number of shelter beds?
In small, well-regulated...
Okay.
What do you think is like the max number of beds you'd want in one facility? Do you think is appropriate?
I think what I've read, the studies are saying around, you know, no more than like 30 to 50.
Okay, great, thank you. Doug?
Yeah, homelessness is the same thing for me and safety. I think it's all combined. I just want kids to be able to walk down the street and be safe. Period.
So what would be your first goal?
My first goal would be we need to have police officers, we need to add street response. We need to add shelters if needed and we need to contact anybody, any consortium or anybody that will come in, nonprofits and so forth, and look at getting people off of the street. I would also look at auditing everybody we've been dealing with, every nonprofit. Things aren't changing and we're spending a lot of money. I would think by this, at this point, you could have bought everyone a house. So I would have those... I would start from scratch and we need to bring in more stakeholders. We need to talk to the police. All this stuff has been done just as by advocates from the homeless side and not from the neighborhood side. It's not... I'm getting... I get an email, I'm sure some of these other candidates got... I'm just... I'm on the street every day. People aren't... They don't feel safe. They'll say, "This is going on over here and here and there." And they all think because I'm with the Water Bureau and I work for the city, I have the secret number to come and get it cleaned up. I don't and I see it every single day. That's the issue. I'll take it on 100% of my time if I have to. It sounds like nobody wants to own it or, you know, we're out of the joint homeless thing with the county. The county's a joke in my opinion. And so, yeah, I would dissolve that and start pathing our own new way. Something has to be done. And if people don't like it, tough. Some people, you can't make everybody happy.
Okay. Noah?
I think the first thing I would do was make sure that we have funding to expand the police force and hire more officers. I know that we're currently short of the number of positions that we already have funded, but we're... If you look at a city for the size of Portland, the average number of police officers is between 16 and 20 per 10,000 population and we're at 12. And that's just not appropriate for a city of this size. We need enough officers that we can reduce 911 call times. We need enough officers that we can respond appropriately. I had a person beat up outside my house with a baseball bat. My wife called the police. It was on our cameras. No one ever showed up because they had higher priority calls than assault with a deadly weapon. That has to stop. So that's my number one priority. The number two priority?
When was that, by the way?
About six months ago.
Can you... So that's crazy because we had our car stolen in Alameda. And they showed up right away. That makes me a little like...
It depends on where you are.
Yeah.
And what else is going on at that...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, I just...
And I mean, in the time that we lived in our house, we've had that happen. I had my car stolen. My wife had her catalytic converter stolen. We had homeless people decide that they were going to set up camp on my yard. You know, it's... And getting a police response right now because of staffing is very hard. Of course, we've missed out on two or three years of any traffic enforcement and you've seen, you know, traffic fatalities increase, traffic accidents increase. You see cars all over the road with expired tags. I mean, it's all part of that. The second thing is exactly what he said. We've spent a ton of money and we haven't gotten results. Recently, the city council passed a... Created a position of somebody who's going to sort of be the oversight of grants going out of the city. I think we need a similar position for a single place that's looking at every not-for-profit that we contract with as a city from every department. So we can say, we can under... Everybody can understand who they're contracting with, what the goal was, what the contract says, what the end results are supposed to be. So the city councilor can say, "Who are we contracting with to do this particular work that's not getting done?" And it doesn't matter if it comes from 15 different departments. There's one person you can go to who is overseeing all of that. And I think that would be incredibly important to accountability.
Could you each share with us one person or institution that's endorsing your candidacy? Just to give us a sense of the support you have in the community? Noah?
I'm endorsed by the Monmouth County Deputy Sheriff's Association, by Future Portland, by 12 for PDx.
What's 12 for PDx?
12 for PDx is a business group that came together specifically for this election to try to choose candidates that they felt were rational and...
And who set it up? Who's behind it?
Can I get back to you?
Sure. And then Future Portland, who's...
Future Portland is a very nicely named... Vicki, who's again, last name escapes me, but... And it's a really grassroots...
Vicki Payne?
Yes. Grassroots organization. They've come to... They came together about, I think, six or so years ago. And again, it's that a lot of these organizations are looking for people that they think are going to be rational and pragmatic.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yep.
No endorsements, which to me is a plus. I'm beholden to nobody. It's funny, when I let my union know, which I've been a proud union member for 26 years, I got a response from the president and he said, "How's your fundraising going?" I've never heard from them since. They've endorsed other candidates.
I'm sorry, what union is that? AFSCME?
AFSCME 189.
Yeah.
And so Rob Martinow, who every time he needs a vote on something within the membership, he has no problem calling or texting me. But yeah, absolutely. And so that, to me, just shows where we're at with this endorsement thing. It's all an inside deal. I have no favors I have to hand out to anybody. I need to work for the people of East Portland.
So you... Sarah Silke is another Portland Water Bureau employee.
Yes.
Running for city council. And did she get AFSCMEs?
She did get endorsed.
Okay, so why do you think she got endorsed instead of you?
She got matching funds, I guess. And otherwise, I couldn't tell you. I think it's because she was able to raise the money.
It takes 250 donations to qualify. Why do you think you didn't get that number?
I don't like asking for money. I just don't. I... When we first started this, I thought, okay, well, you know, I'll go on my Facebook and this. Well, Facebook isn't around for the last 15 years. And I noticed that everybody I knew from high school and everybody, they're all gone. No one even lives in the city. And when I text friends of mine, and a lot of my friends have donated to me, they were like, "Why would you bother with this? Why would you do this with... That's a shithole." All of that stuff. All these people lived here and it's sick.
Can I... Is the Water Bureau well-run?
Water Bureau's run excellent.
It is?
Which is why they've... Back when I was on that Cuyana project, they were going to buy PGE and then the city was going to buy PGE and combine them. They've always... Because the Water Bureau's the jewel, they've always tried to mess with it or bring BES in underneath that umbrella and it never works. And now they just started something called One Water. I have no idea what it is. It's bringing everybody together, but it's just screwing up our best...
Quick, I actually have a quick question about the Water Bureau. I'm sorry. Gabe Salmer was...
Gabe Salmer.
Fired? I've heard that Water Bureau employees overwhelmingly are very upset by that.
Yes.
I don't really understand. Is that... Do you think that's a fair characterization?
Absolutely.
Any idea why she was fired?
Mingus Maps is an asshole. What do you want me to tell you?
No, he's still your boss, right? No, he's still your boss, right?
Actually, yeah, that's the whole thing. After this whole thing's over and I, look, no one's read my Twitter feed, but I posted on there right away that this is bullshit. And so, when I go back, you know what? What the hell? I'm 20, I'm in 26 years. I'll do my last four years. I'm not worried about retribution. But I can say it. For him to do it the way he did, and she's got a lot of issues at home too that people don't know about. It was really a shitty thing to do.
Okay.
Alright, thanks David.
Yeah, well, I work with a lot of cross-section of different governments. So, I have endorsements from Eddie Morales in Gresham, Vince Jones Dixon, our commissioner, new county commissioner. I am endorsed by my entire school board, even though we don't always have unanimous votes and I often am like the odd vote out sometimes. I have all of their endorsements. Endorsements from David Douglas, Stephanie Stevens.
Thank you.
Any unions?
Uh, no.
No unions. Okay. What about any current city council members?
No, I didn't see any.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Joe?
I have no endorsements, no funding. Not only do I have enough time to get that going, I, I also would have chosen not to. I'd rather, I'd be very selective of endorsements or money I'd be accepting. Because I don't like to misrepresent what I'm, the job I'm trying to apply for.
I'm curious, which city in all, I have this question for all of you. Which city, current member of city council do you most align with policy-wise? Noah, let's start with you.
Let's see. Renee Gonzalez.
Okay, thanks.
You.
I saw that you'd asked this question of other candidates. I, I can't stand with anybody. I think Carmen Rubio's way too progressive. I think Gonzalez comes off as just being a jerk. Dan Ryan, I, I never see him. I don't know what he's doing. He just keeps running on his brother's death. And I don't know if he's still doing that again in his district. I'm sure he probably is. And Mignus Maff, I already let you know what I thought I had. So, I can't, I can't put my.
How about a past member?
A past, you know who I like? Bud Clark.
Gotcha.
You left off one member of city council, Ted Wheeler. What's your?
Ted Wheeler, a guy who finally started doing things right after he said he wasn't going to run again. I don't know what these guys are scared of. I really don't.
Alright, thank you. David?
It's a hard choice with the current city council. I would say Carmen Rubio.
Thanks. What makes you say that?
Because, oh, I have no, I've, I've never gotten any parking tickets. I've lived here my whole life.
Wow.
Yeah. But I took public transit most of my life, you know, down here to PSU and all that. Carmen Rubio particularly because she's not Renee Gonzalez. I think he has been detrimental to Portland and he is the exact opposite of what we need in terms of painting people, putting people in boxes of you're either pro this or you're anti-this. Or, you know, putting, and trying to, you know, play on people's fear and, and divide people.
Yep.
Instead of trying to say there's like some practical solutions we can come together on.
Gotcha. Joe?
Currently Renee Gonzalez. I think he speaks with detail and he's the only person that's saying difficult things that not a lot of people want to hear. But also, that's not a full endorsement.
Can I ask Noah a quick question?
Yes.
What, so, when, what years do you drive a cab at night?
I drove from, oh, good, probably 10 to 13.
10 to 13?
Yeah.
What did you, just quickly, what did you learn sort of about the city in those three years?
It's, it's a great job. And what you learned, the number one thing that I took away from it is that 95% of people one-on-one are really nice and really friendly and really just want to chat and say hi. That the other 5% are only in your cab for 15 minutes and you can put up with anybody for 15 minutes. That it's an, I mean, if you haven't driven around Portland at night during the summer, it's an incredibly beautiful city coming over the Markham Bridge and looking at the river and the lights. And hey, so you learn that. Every neighborhood is, is, it's just a great city. It's just a great city and it's filled with great people.
And only a few throw up in your cab?
You know, there's a key, if you have 10 seconds. I carried around those barf bags that you can get at the emergency room that have the plastic thing that holds open. And if someone gets in your cab and they look even remotely green, you pull one out, you hand it to them and say, "You're going to carry this for the ride." And they'll say, "But I don't feel sick." I said, "I don't care if you feel sick. If you don't use it, you just give it back to me." And I had one lady who said that. We went through that little exchange. And then she said, "I'm not going to throw," and she couldn't fit in the sentence and throw. So, it's, it's, yeah.
So, it made you, I mean, that's a really unique perspective for a city council candidate, I would say. I think, you know, that's a job that really, you sort of see, it's, you know, it's a different view.
Right. And it's, 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 it's just, it really is amazing that it doesn't matter where we come from or what our background is or how much money we have or anything. Most people are just incredibly nice.
And this last thing, how did you feel about going from being a lawyer, you know, at a firm to driving a cab? What was that transition like for you? Because this would be another transition.
Well, the transition was actually easier than you would imagine. I didn't particularly enjoy some aspects of the legal profession. But also, I, I have, I've, I've done a lot of different jobs. I pulled green chain at a lumber mill. I was a short-horder cook. I ran a business, I, you know. And so, I, I really, I don't look at jobs as status things necessarily. So, going, you know, from being a lawyer to being a cab driver, cab drivers especially then, that is a, that's a profession. That's a respectable industry. And those people are hard-working people who are supporting families. And I never felt an ounce of shame as if I had come down in the world. I was, I was going from one profession populated by professionals who know what they're doing to another profession populated by professionals who knew what they were doing. And one of the biggest shames of the TNC industries with Uber and Lyft and stuff to me is that they've taken that profession and turned it into amateur hour. And, you know, and, yeah, I, I couldn't be prouder of having been a cab driver and what I learned driving and the people I met and, and the people I continue to meet as a superintendent. Because it's one of the most diverse industries that exists.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Want to move on to rapid fire? Okay, we got some rapid fire questions. One-word answers, please. And if you try to say a sentence, I will cut you off, mostly. We'll start with you, Noah. Do you think Portland police needs fewer cops, more cops, or has the correct number now?
More cops.
Okay.
More.
More.
Did the Oregon legislature do the right thing by recriminalizing fentanyl? Yes or no?
Yes.
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 Are you in support of Clinton Triangle, which is the city's first temporary alternative shelter site?
Yes.
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 Okay. Do you support the city remaining in the joint office?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Based on your knowledge of City Hall, what is the one bureau or office you think is the most in need of an audit?
People's.
Okay.
Transportation.
Okay.
Civic life.
Okay.
Water.
Water. Why do you say water? I'm curious.
It's, it's very bloated. It's, it's a huge budget. And I see it, there's a lot of, in trying to do research in the past few weeks and trying to figure out what it is I'm running for, what it is I'm trying to represent. They have been the most difficult to track down details of what they do, how they do it, you know, they carry it out, who is making decisions.
Do you think that's fair? You're in.
Absolutely.
No?
No. Everybody, I, I work for the Water Bureau. I'm out on the street every day. Everybody is always thanking me. We deliver the best drinking water in the entire world. There's bar none, so.
Okay, but I don't think that's the point you're making.
Yeah, I wouldn't critique anybody working with water. I mean, I think it's a very.
Then what, okay, that it's bloated? I, I don't see it. And I'm.
Joe, what are you basing that on?
In, in just in looking at the different bureaus in the city, looking at the different facets of the city. It's, it's easier, it's not easy to find information of how to function and looking over like budgetary functions. But the Water Bureau to me has been very sordid. I, I don't have information that I can directly.
Can you give us one bit of specific information? I mean, have you compared the Water Bureau budget to other cities its size and find out that it's too large? Comparing the Water Bureau budget to the Fire Bureau budget doesn't seem to me to be terribly instructive.
I don't know why, I don't know that it's too large, but I don't know that it needs to be double the size of the police bureau when we have such a great resource of water. We're spending more money than places like Denver and Idaho.
You mean the Water Bureau costs more or does our cost of water?
Our cost of water.
Okay. Alright, thanks. This is slightly different, sorry, we can come back to it. Slightly different flavor of the question I asked earlier about which city council member do you most align with? Which member of city council do you think has done the most for the city? Noah will start with you. Policy-wise. Like actual things rather than?
No, I understand. I understand. That's a really difficult question. I think, I think Renee Gonzalez has done a lot of things that I think are important. I think that. Yeah, I think that's who I would go with.
Renee?
Yeah, Mignus Maff, for a second. I like him a lot.
Alright, thank you. Doug?
Current? I, I can't come up with something that I don't believe. I don't think any of them have done.
You don't think any of them have done a thing?
Okay, well, no, no, I don't.
Okay, alright. David?
I might have a weird answer too, because I'd say Ted Wheeler failed so spectacularly that he made sure that this new charter reform passed with a weak mayor system. And that we're now going to have a powerful council that represents more of the city.
So, he succeeded by failure?
Yeah.
That was essentially my answer. I think Wheeler, I think the most change is negative and positive.
Okay. Do you support the city's camping ban as it stands currently? Yes or no, Noah?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is this a one word?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
Yes.
But I am curious, what you, yeah, what would you change?
Because I don't know where these fantastical shelter beds that they're talking about are. If there are open beds, that must mean that they are not being filled with people who are on the waiting, on the waiting list. So, it's kind of like getting out ahead of yourself. And it, and it ties into this whole thing that a lot of candidates don't seem to want to talk about is like, you're just fear-mongering and you're telling people that you're going to solve the problem. But we've been watching sweeps happen for the last 15 years. We've watched them sweep people from one place of the city to another. And so, this is just kind of like window dressing. This is trying to give people false hope that they're going to be able to get, that the police are going to get tough on homeless and they're going to get them off their corner. They're not, they're not going to get put in beds and they're going to be right back out.
So, as a city councillor, how do you, how do you solve that?
Well, working productively on the, on the homeless plan and moving aggressively to get shelter beds to the capacity, because we've never had more shelter beds than we've had homeless. And that should be our goal. And we need to start treating some of these problems like they could get worse before they get better. We saw that.
So, you have police force people in shelters?
Huh?
Are you saying have police force people?
No, I'm saying we have to work on the supply side far more than the enforcement side, although that is a piece of it. But we've seen just how promising that you're just going to get tough on the homeless has not worked. And it's wasted millions and millions of dollars as we just shuffle people around, destabilizing them, moving them lower on the ladder of, you know, transitioning back into stability. And even then making them sometimes even more mentally or, you know, emotionally unstable, which has been a public safety threat to everybody else.
But the, the plan for supply side has been the plan since the 10-year plan in 2004 and we're 20 years into it. Like, it's, something has to change. And the, the camping ban says, "If we have beds, you have to use them." It doesn't say, "We will beat you up if there's no bed available," right? So, nobody, but.
Well, it's still a particularly ridiculous notion though when you're 3,000 beds short.
We're more.
So, and, and so, but we've, we've gone and we've opened a shelter and then we closed a shelter. Our growth has not improved until just, you know, after post-COVID, we've been giving some more beds. And we're, so we're moving in a good direction.
We have three times the number of homeless people on the streets since they implemented the 2004 10-year plan and homelessness. That is failure. Saying we should continue to do exactly the same thing that was in that plan.
That's not what we were saying. That's not what we're saying at all.
It sounds, it sounds like what you're saying.
I think what you are saying is that, let's keep doing the same thing. The, the constant sweeping of people, the constant destabilizing of people, that's doing the same thing we've done for the last 15 years.
The homeless population makes up like less than 1% of the population in Portland. Those people who live on those streets, those people who own those houses, those people who own those businesses or work in those businesses also have an expectation that the city of Portland is going to look out for them. Right? It's not, our, we are spending huge amounts of money and we have spent huge amounts of money on homelessness for decades and have accomplished nothing. At the very least, we should be able to say to someone who lives in a city in the first world that you're not going to have someone camping in your lawn, right? Against your wishes.
And how are you going to do that then?
Again, we're going to create designated camping areas. We're going to increase homeless, or increase homeless shelters. We're doing all the things that you're talking about and what the camping ban says is, "And you have to take them." And it's not an option to camp out in front of this guy's star and smoke fentanyl. You have an obligation to take the services if they're available. That's what the camping ban says. And that makes perfect sense to me.
So, do you think, is there anywhere you could improve the city's current strategy toward addressing homelessness?
Well, I'm not sure I, we know what, that's why I believe in this accountability. I'm not sure we know what the strategy of these different not-for-profits that we contract with is. I think what we have created is a huge amount of spending that we can't account for. And if you're telling me that $60,000, or $60,000 per year per homeless person is getting $60,000 worth of results per year, I think that's insanity.
Do you think the city should move more of those services that it normally contracts to nonprofits in-house?
I think that's one option. I think another option, like I said, is ensuring accountability. What is the goal? If you come to me with a program and said, "I am going to house 1,500 homeless people," then at the end of the period of time at which you said you would get to housing 1,500 homeless people, you better have housed 1,500 homeless people. I feel like we spend money with organizations and we get full employment for homeless advocates, but we're clearly not getting homeless people off the streets.
Thank you. Quick question. If you could serve alongside any other candidate in District 1, not necessarily just in this room, in the whole scene, who would you want to serve next to? Joe, let's start with you.
Terrence Hayes.
Okay, thank you.
Steph Roth.
Steph Roth, okay.
Hayes is the way to go.
Okay.
Loretta Smith and, and Terrence, actually.
Okay, alright, thank you. Okay, we're going to end with our fun question. What were you best known for in high school? Our best answer so far is one candidate said they were the only player on the varsity soccer team that never played a minute the entire season. So.
Because of a nepotism situation?
Right, yeah. So, something like, you can be self-deprecating. We love self-deprecation. If you were voted like most likely to succeed, most, you know, biggest nerd.
Or if you stole like a bunch of rental cars and had a crack-up derby.
Yeah.
Like I did. No, I didn't, but I knew a guy who did.
What high school did you go to and what is the name of that guy?
He sounds fun.
Doug Andrews, Summit High School, Colorado. It was the craziest thing I've ever heard about.
Yeah, anyone?
I wish I was there.
What comes to mind? Who are you known for, Joe?
Well, I was known by every, every group. I was kind of like the every guy. It's like I, I had friends in every, you know, with the nerds and jocks and the, you know.
Got it.
Back to the ground.
Great. David?
I would say quintessential team player. Madison High School doesn't exactly ever have a big football team. So, I found myself playing defensive line, defensive end. And by my senior year, I was just backing up just about every single player, you know.
Okay. Doug?
I ran first student by president and then I looked to change out my running mate and so they wouldn't let me run anymore because I wasn't part of the, you know, the class and all that stuff, the government class.
Why, why'd you, why'd you want to change your running mate?
Because it was a dude who was kind of a dork and then I figured I'll just get.
What's wrong with dorks?
Well, I figured I'd just get a popular girl to run with me. She said yes. And I think they were all a little bothered because I was going to easily win. Because it was me and, because I was running against two girls and two girls. It's this popularity contest, so I was going to have fun with it, so they asked.
Got it. Noah?
So, I went to a high school with three grades and 1,500 kids and I was a little punk rock kid. And I was the only kid who walked around my high school in a black leather jacket with, this is the 80s, pegged pants, black Converse All-Stars.
What pants?
Pegged. Where do you, so you get pants, you get pants that are slightly too long, yeah, you're too young. Slightly too long. You, you fold them over like this and then you roll up the cuffs, pegging them. And they look great with Converse All-Stars, just so you know. Great shoe, used to be.
I'm bummed you didn't wear them here.
What band are you into?
No, so I was the kid at, we did, we got out of the school functions, I mean, this is a longer answer, but we got out of school functions because we figured out that you couldn't force people to go to pep rallies. And so, I would, there was a big bulletin board in the room they put us in, or not bulletin, chalkboard in the room that they put us in. And so, every time there was a pep rally, I would write in huge letters, "Sex Pistols are God" on the, on the, on the thing. And, you know, obviously the Ramones and then it's the 80s, the Dead and Oakland are still genius. But if you were a teenager in the 80s and you were a little punk rock kid and you listened to the Dead Milkmen, not only did you think they were genius then, 40 years later, you still think they're genius. Because there's just something about that band that if it locks in when you're that age, it's locked in forever. Joe, so, there you go.
I had a Dead Kennedys hat in my school.
The Dead Kennedys?
Yeah.
Oh, I never liked Jill Beoff's voice. I just couldn't.